Welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. If you'd please join me and stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, public for which it stands. Indivisible.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for the following individuals. Harold Crowe, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Melissa Colling, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Joyce Ludwig, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. I'm going to take things a little bit out of order here, and I'm going to start with staff recognition. So Dr. Ward?
Hello, thank you, everyone. Good evening. I'd like to read a little synopsis of what happened on April 1st. On the morning of April 1st, Ms. Anne Marie Shelley, a food service worker at the North Syracuse Junior High School, arrived at work and soon realized she was experiencing a medical issue. She called for help and was immediately assisted by a fellow food service worker. Brandy Parity was able to guide Michelle to the ground while the manager Denise DeSantis called 911. And Anne Marie ran to get the school nurses. Their quick thinking set in motion a change of life-saving actions. Nurses Jody Barnes and Amanda Kelly, along with the school resource officer Elizabeth Lehman responded immediately. Nurse Barnes connected the AED. Nurse Kelly began chest compressions and Officer Lehman administered rescue breaths. Their efforts went on until emergency medical personnel arrived and transported Miss Shelley to the hospital. Doctors confirmed that without these heroic efforts, the outcome would have been tragically different. Today, we are happy to say that Miss Shelley is recovering and is expected to make a full recovery. Her son Stephen Shelley called me personally to express his family's gratitude and wanted to recognize these individuals for saving their mother's life. So on behalf of the North Syracuse Central School District and our Board of Education, we are honored to recognize the three individuals whose training, teamwork, care, made all the difference as they directed, administered self-life-saving care to Miss Shelley. Nurses Jody Barnes, Amanda Kelly, and Officer Elizabeth Lehman, would you please come forward to be recognized? Also, we want to extend our sincere appreciation to Ms. Parody, Ms. DeSantis, and Ms. Crick for their immediate thoughtful and courageous responses. Your collective actions allowed the medical and emergency personnel to administer critical life-saving care to save your coworker. We are grateful for your calm and care in a critical moment. And Mr. Shelley, I would like to invite you to come up and say a few words here at the mic.
April 1st. Parents wedding anniversary. Our lives took a turn for the worse. Tom and Marie walked into junior high, felt she didn't feel good and collapsed and went into cardiac arrest. So her boss Denise called 911 and staff member ran and grabbed the school nurses, Amanda Kelly and Jody Barnes, and grabbed Betsy, SRO, and started fast and effective CPR and early AED. Saves our mom. I know from previous fire experience, many don't survive a full cardiac arrest. So my family, if I can call them up? Never mind. My family and I are forever indebted to each and every one of you. Save her life. And the good news is, just coming home tomorrow on her birthday.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, now it's fitting to read this proclamation after hearing that. Throughout history, teachers, school nurses, speech therapists, and transportation personnel have had an impact on our district's students and community. They work for the well-being, welfare, and future of our children. This awesome responsibility is accepted with commitment, dedication, and even love. Because of the complexity and diversity of their role, they must be flexible, resourceful, positive, and patient. The teachers, school nurses, speech therapists, and transportation personnel of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber who have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive a quality education. To honor the teachers, school nurses, speech therapists, and transportation personnel of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our community's most valuable resource, our children, I, Michael Maurizio, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare May 6th, 2025, as Teacher Appreciation Day, May 7th, 2025, as School Nurse Appreciation Day, May 8th, 2025, as Transportation Personnel Appreciation Day, and May 9th, 2025, as Speech Therapist Appreciation Day, to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Do I have a motion to accept that? Xavier and Paul, although in favor, that is unanimous, and thank you to all of you. Anyone who's here, if they can come up, we have some certificates to give you.
Let's start.
Hi, I'm Melissa Figaroa. I am a consultant teacher with our district. Due to the budget cuts, I will be going back into the classroom next year.
I'm Cassandra Court Ray. I teach special education at the Early Education Program. As a CNS student myself, I'm the teacher I am today because of the educators before me, so it's an honor to stand here tonight.
My name is Amanda Manikai-Mori. I'm the 15-1 early primary teacher at Smith Road, and I'm extremely passionate about what I do because I have a kiddo in our district as well who also has special ed.
Thanks. My name is Patrick Baker. I've been teaching for about 20 years. I've been in the North Syracuse School District, I'm special education if I didn't say that, for two now. And kind of what you were saying, like, my son is also a child with special needs. He's over at Main Street. But my whole family had this experience, including myself. So seeing everybody in here, I don't know anybody necessarily in this audience, but I do know what you guys represent for us. The big support, because it takes a village, that whole cliche, but also the people at these tables, too. It is really important, as the education changes day by day, that we have to be flexible, not a rock, but be like a clay, you know? And I just appreciate all the support that we have as it continues to evolve. But thanks.
Hi, I'm Jackie Hayman. I teach special ed at CNS High School, English 11 and 12. And I've been in the district since 2012 when I moved back home. Yay!
I recognize speech therapists, right? So here we go.
Thank you. I'm Jill Trivia, speech-language pathologist. I work at North Syracuse Early Education Program, almost 30 years in. And Mr. Crabtree was my second-grade teacher.
Hi, my name is Mary Li Wang. I am first year at North Syracuse Early Education Program as a speech-language pathologist as well.
Okay, always excited to have kids here with us at these meetings, so I'd like to welcome up Nick Shoals to talk about MathCon and Math League.
Good evening, Board and Cabinet. I thank you so much for the opportunity to recognize our students and families and the amazing achievements that they're coming to the board to be recognized tonight. The cool thing that I think that we do a really good job in our district is is see that students need lots of different things to help support them be as successful as possible. And one of the things that we put in place three years ago now is an extension opportunity for our students who are at that highest level of their math ability. And instead of just letting them sit in class and kind of be bored with the math and it coming very easy to them, we really wanted to say, what is an opportunity for us to challenge them at their highest level? And so we put in something called MathCon, which is this extension opportunity. We also have Math League at the middle school level and at the high school level, but we're going to talk, just, we're going to start with MathCon. Yeah, that's definitely a high five there. So one of the cool things is MathCon goes from 4th grade through to 7th grade. We had over 400 students in our district participate in MathCon this year. And this is an opportunity for our students, over the course of about five months, to receive, to have problems where they work really, really hard, where they work on really challenging problems and kind of challenge their brains in different ways than they might have seen in a normal math classroom. So we have some amazing teachers that get behind these students and then support them all the way through. They then take an online test in the early March. And this year, we had over 60 students place above the 80th percentile in the country, which is the highest number we've ever had, as well as our two highest scores on the MathCon competition this year. So let's just, before we say names, let's give it up for all of our students. I'm going to recognize, and if I call your name, I want you to come up and then we'll give you your certificate. Or maybe we should, why don't we come up and start that way? And then we'll give you guys your certificates as you guys come up. But we're going to start first in 4th grade. And I want you guys to stay up here so that we can just kind of recognize everyone, and then I'm going to say one last thing at the end. What's that? Yeah, so not those ones yet. These ones. So we'll start in 4th grade, and we're going to start with Hannah Guesmia. Hannah, come on up. Hannah is from Bear Road Elementary. I want Mia Lu to come up from Roxborough Road Elementary. I didn't see Luke here. Is Luke Hole here? No, Luke was the other top three, and he is also from Bear Road Elementary. Fareed Malakazadi, come on up, Fareed. Fareed is from Gillette Road Middle School. Scott Bissel from Gillette Road Middle School, come on up. Emma Wilkie, come on up, Emma? Emmet? Sorry, Emmet. Sorry, Emmet. And Addison DeHay, come on up. This is our 5th and 6th grade students participating in MathCon. Also, and then we'll go, Abeline Baker, come on up, from 7th grade. Pierce Zinzmeyer, come on up, again from Gillette, and Kayden Gaff from Roxborough Road Elementary. I stand right here. I lastly wanted to recognize Hannah. Hannah received the highest score that we've ever received on the MathCon competition, placing her in the 91st percentile in the country. So, great job, Hannah. Yes. Oh, yes, I didn't even see Aleah. Aleah, Aleah first, come on up. Aleah is in 5th grade at Gillette Road. Sorry, Aleah, I didn't meet you. Anyone else in MathCon? I don't think, I think that's it for MathCon. So congratulations, all of you. Really proud of you guys. And I expect my homework to all of you guys is that when you go into next year, the first thing that you ask your math teacher is, when does MathCon start? Sound good? Okay, awesome. You guys can go ahead and see. So secondly, we'd like to recognize Math League. If you thought of this in kind of two tiers for our middle school students, MathCon, we open it up to probably the top 5%, top 10% to 5% of our students. Math League is the top 2% to 3% of our students. Who, what they end up doing is they actually compete regionally with about 19 to 20 other middle schools. This year, we had this year, we had two schools placed in the top five. Gillette Road took second. Roxborough Road took fifth, out of 19 schools in the area. So pretty exciting. They, we also held it at Gillette Road Middle School, so thank you, Sarah Jones, Principal, for helping us set that up. And we had all of the different middle schools come to this area and participate in a really cool competition. Janice Christopher, Kelly Mowen, I'm blanking, Kathy Shell did an amazing job setting that up. Those are our Math League advisors in the district. But I wanted to recognize a couple of students as well for Math League. Let's go ahead and have Abeline Baker come on up. Oh, I'm sorry, Abby, hold on. Not, no, you're going to stay there. My bad, Abby. Reading off the wrong thing. Kayden Gaff, come on up. Kayden, from Roxborough Road Elementary. Ethan Lingrofsky from Gillette Road Middle School. Cameron Capano from Roxborough Road Middle School. And Robert Clark. Is Robert Clark here? Oh, yes, that's right. Robert Clark's dad is coming to accept Robert. The things we do for our students, our kids, right? And I wanted to recognize Kayden specifically. They break it up into different grade levels, and so they do the top three in 6th grade, the top three in Cameron and Robert were both in the top three in 6th grade. Both Ethan and Kayden were in the top three in 7th grade, and then they also do an 8th grade competition. But Kayden scored the second highest among all students in the entire area, and no one was even close to him and the top one. There was a top kid that got 25, which was a perfect score over the course of five events. Kayden got 24. He missed one question over the entire time, and the next closest person was 22. So congratulations, Kayden, and congratulations to all of you guys.
Thank you, guys. Have a good one.
So thank you, guys, all for coming. Please, you would feel obligated to continue to stay. Don't feel like you have to stay. We're actually going to take a picture with Ms. Cook right outside. So if I could have all of the MathCon and Math League families head right out there, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, Don, you're up for our budget presentation.
Well, good evening. This is the kind of culminating event of a four-month budget process that we've all worked really hard on. And so tonight, we're going to take you through the budget proposal with hopes that the board will adopt the budget tonight. I think, Dr. Ward, would you like to just talk a little bit about some of the highlights?
Sure. I want to thank Don, first of all, for, you know, spearheading all of our budget conversations over the last several months to get to this point where we are tonight. So we just want people to know our budget is aligned with our mission and our goals. And those goals are the graduation rate, reading proficiency, and emotional competency. And we've talked about those, and we're going to remain steadfast on keeping those in all the decisions that we make. Students continue to have extensive academic choices and co-curricular activities. We want to highlight, we've actually added more co-curricular activities for our kids throughout this past year and continue. Our class sizes remain relatively low, especially in our early primary grades. That's where our focus has been, to keep them low. And our budget is fiscally, we believe it's fiscally responsible with a 2.91 within the tax cap. Of note, and it's kind of, it's a somber note, is that approximately 38 positions were eliminated during this budget piece. As a result of those positions, three employees were laid off. Most of the employees will fill positions that are open due to retirements. So that was our focus during creating this budget. Done?
Yeah, and as we've talked about before, you know, many districts around the area have, around the state, have struggled this year. We're all feeling the impact of inflation. We're struggling with the loss of our COVID funding, which was significant. We knew it was going to be short-lived. Nonetheless, there's more work to be done, and the funds are no longer, no longer available. So we've had to make that adjustment. And we're very disappointed with our, with our state aid, particularly our foundation aid. We've had declining enrollment, and that's negatively impacted our state aid. I'm happy to report as we begin this our state aid. I'm happy to report as we begin this budget cycle, or I'm sorry, as the board's uh about to adopt this budget and we head into next year, that all twelve bargaining unit contracts have been negotiated, most through June uh thirtieth to twenty-eighth. So all those adjustments have been reflected in the budget. And it's important to note with all of the events going on in the federal government, um that, you know, we received ten million dollars in um in federal funding through a variety of uh of grants uh whatnot. And uh we have not contemplated the loss of any of that funding in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So we, we remain hopeful that that, that funding will stay intact. Uh just a couple pictures of our, of our kids. We've talked about inflation. Um I think um, you know, our hope is that inflation will moderate uh because that's important uh uh for us in order to stay uh within our budget. Um and also, uh as we uh work forward in the years, it's just hard to absorb deflation, inflation when you can only pass two percent on uh through the tax levy. Unfortunately, we do not have a final New York State budget. This is the second year in a row that this has occurred. And just to be clear, um, we don't have a New York State budget that is, has been adopted by uh the legislature um as of the date of your adoption of the budget. And so what that means is that it's possible there'll be uh some changes in our actual state aid. And um since this budget contemplates the use of reserves, uh should we get a little more money, we'll use less reserves. Um, I'm hoping we don't get less money, but that did in fact happen last year. And if we did, we'll come back to the board and ask you to uh allow us to maybe appropriate some additional fund balance. Two-hundred-and-twenty-four-million-dollar budget, a five-point-five-nine percent increase. I wanna just point out that uh the big increase is building aid and that's because we have so many capital projects underway. Um and uh we're getting, uh those projects are, are being aided. And so if you exclude that aid, our budget increases about three-point-four percent, which is pretty good given uh the inflationary environment that uh we're operating in and the fact that all of our contracts have been renegotiated. You haven't seen this slide this year. You, I show it to you every year, but it, it makes the point that we're very dependent on the tax levy and our state aid. Uh those are the two big pieces of the pie there that, that fund our operations. And so um just wanted to make that point. That's uh, that drives our budget process. Tax uh levy, we've looked at this calculation uh numerous times. It's two-point-nine-one percent. We're staying within uh the tax cap formula. Uh so this will require one more yes vote than no vote uh to be um accepted by the voters. This chart, chart is a chart that you haven't seen yet this year, but this shows the impact uh of these tax increases uh or this tax increase on homes in our three towns, Cicero, Klan, Salina. And as, as all of you know, um the school district has nothing to do with assessments. Um, um, we, we're not involved in that process. Uh but every house has a full value. And so a home of, of a hundred thou- with a full value of a hundred thousand dollars, regardless of what their assessed value is, um, will uh pay about eighteen-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars in uh annual school taxes. That's about a fifty-two-dollar increase over last year or about four dollars and forty cents a month. I've, I've talked to you about um our uh expenditure assumptions uh each week uh or each board meeting for the last several months. Um, I ju- I just wanna point out that we uh, the district uh does amazing work with its um health benefits in terms of working with our consultants um and with our employees to manage uh the cost of healthcare. We provide our, our employees with excellent benefits. Uh but we have uh uh, as a result of our health oversight committee and, and working closely with our union, uh we have been able to keep those increases reasonable, uh at least this year. Uh to have a four percent increase in healthcare is pretty, pretty amazing. Um and I also like to point out, and I just think it's important uh that our taxpayers know this, is that we contribute to um the TRS, Teachers Retirement System, and the ERS Retirement System. And we're very fortunate here in New York State to have very well-managed retirement funds. And when I say well-managed, they're fully funded. And so the taxpayers at least know, and, and, and myself as the, the financial officer here, know that when we make our contributions uh to those um funds, tho- to those uh TRS and ERS, that those funds are very well-managed, but also that um they're fully funded. And what that means is that when an employee retires, um and they leave the district, we are no longer paying for their retirement. We're making contributions along the way throughout their career. Um and it, it creates a lot of stability for us as we think about our budget. There are many states that have less than fully funded pension plans. So they're actually paying retiree benefits out of current operating funds. And I just think that's really important to, to keep in mind. Um, so as we've talked about for the many months, that this was a challenging budget process. Um and we had to use a number of strategies to uh balance this budget. And I wanna just recap those for you quickly. Any of the fun, funding that was used for um ARP funding and CURSA funding uh that was, came to us as part of COVID, um funded a number of initiatives throughout the district uh during the COVID years. And uh we have eliminated those expenditures. Unfort- and I wanna be very clear on this, that there were a lot of really good, valuable, important things being done with that funding. Uh people did great work. And so I don't, we don't wanna send the message that, oh, this is uh, you know, excess spending that we can get rid of. It's just, we just don't have the funding anymore. So um, and that goes for the thirty-eight positions uh that are impacted uh largely by our funding shortfall. A lot of great people doing great work. Um and uh fortunately, uh the vast majority of them will move into uh other positions within their uh tenure area. Um, we were able to reduce um our, our budget for healthcare. Again, I mentioned earlier how we uh, we manage our health expenses. And uh so we've been able to trim in that area as well. And we're using two million dollars of our ERS and TRS reserves uh to balance the budget. And we go into uh this uh twenty-five, twenty-six school year with the hope that things will be better as we look toward twenty-six, twenty-seven. Same numbers, two-hundred-and-twenty-four-million-dollar budget, eleven-point-eight-million-dollar increase. Um again, um the biggest increase here is our debt service associated with those capital projects where we're getting additional um building aid. Again, this, we, I show this chart every year, but it really illustrates the point that we are in a people-based business. The single most important thing we do is put an adult in front of a child. Uh and the orange and blue segments of this pie are our um people costs. Um and that's as it should be. The, the majority of our funding is spent on uh that very challenge of, of uh educating students with adults in front of children. Just a couple pictures um from our schools of happy children uh with uh adults that, that care deeply about them. Uh transportation. Um, we are, are continuing with our tried and true uh bus replacement pro- program. Uh we try to not have buses over ten years old on the road. Uh that's because of the challenges that um we have with DOT inspection, once the chassis start to rust. Um and so we're replacing um another twelve uh buses. Uh two of them will be uh wheelchair lift and AC uh uh equipped for our special needs students. Uh we'll have eight of the traditional sixty-five passenger gasoline buses. Um and then we're, we're, we're modifying two of those buses to include larger gas tanks and cargo storage. We think this um will help with field trips um and uh make things a little bit uh easier on our clubs and organizations. So we don't have to rent charter buses as much. Um or they don't have to rent charter buses as much because they typically carry that cost. Uh we'll be able to support them better. And then we're gonna have a, a handful of uh MNO vehicles as we usually do, uh large mo- no-moral replacement, uh service van in the truck. The tax impact of these vehicles is about point-one-three percent or about two dollars and forty-one cents on a hundred thousand dollar home before star. At this stage of the game, uh we're not predicting an increase or decrease in our fund balance. It's uh uh too early to tell uh where the U will end up. Um so we are going to, uh right now, it looks like we'll end the year with about four and a half percent fund balance against this year's, uh against next year's budget of two-hundred-and-twenty-four million. Terms of reserves, um, we are seeing a, a quite a drop in our reserves uh because of the, some of the capital work we've done. Uh the uh money we've used to balance the budget last year and then the two million dollars we're using this year. Um, so uh I just show the, show this chart to illustrate that reserves are kinda one-time money. Once you spend it, it's gone. And so each of the amounts up there, uh they're not extra money. Um tax certiori covers any of the uh people that are contesting their um, their assessments and therefore their tax liability to the district. Workman's comp is backed up by specific claims. Um, in recent history, we've had specific use uninsured liabilities that we've had to use general liability funds for. This year's no different. Um, and uh so each of those reserves are important. Uh they play a role in terms of covering liabilities that the districts have, the district has, and um also allow us to uh balance budgets in, in difficult times like this year. Uh we are also, we're very fortunate. We've been, uh had the support of uh Assemblyman Al Sterpi to support our Aquatics Center. And um, he provided uh initial funding. Um, he came back with an additional three million dollars for a total of five million dollars in funding. And the odd thing about uh this is that while um he can provide the funding, we're not allowed to use it for the pool project unless the taxpayers approve that. So we're gonna ask the taxpayers on this um uh in May, on May twentieth, if they will allow us to use this three million dollars toward the pool project. Um, it's specifically designated for that. It'll have no impact on the tax base. Uh no one will pay any additional money for it. It's just simply an administrative formality uh so that we can use the money as it was intended by Assemblyman Sterpi. There's a picture of our board president and Assemblyman Sterpi and our two, uh, our two uh swim coaches. Um, happily uh moving some uh debris or dirt as part of our kickoff of the pool project. Um and this is a rendition of the pool. Um, again, it'll, it's gonna be a beautiful facility, a tremendous asset for the community. Um, and uh we expect that the board was up at the site tonight touring, touring the site. And uh we expect that it'll be ready for the um twenty-six, twenty-seven uh school year. We are obligated by law to have the Salina Library proposition on the ballot and uh, and so we're doing that. Uh what a gem it is to have that library on our Roxborough campus. Um, and uh our, that, the Roxborough community uh really benefits uh from that library and they have a very modest increase of fourteen thousand dollars or two-point-eight percent. We're gonna do the virtual meeting thing again. Um, so we had a, a number of meetings established. Uh so we're gonna, on April twenty-ninth, uh next week, we're gonna go down to the Rocks Campus and we're gonna meet in person uh with uh anybody that would like to attend at five PM. On May first, we'll do a virtual meeting at seven PM and the communities can join. On May sixth, the same thing at six PM. And then on May seventh, we'll have um an in-person meeting at Cicero Well. So you can see we're covering the north end of our district and the south end of the district and then those folks that can't get out. And then on May thirteenth, we're gonna have our um uh budget hearing here um in the district office at six PM. So plenty of opportunities to hear about the budget. Um, again, just to remind folks that voting is uh uh in two places here at the district office and at the Jerome Melville, um, uh, I'm sorry, and at Michael J. Bragman Stadium. Uh again, north and south uh of Route forty-eight, forty-one is the demarc- demarcation. Um and if people aren't registered, we encourage them to contact uh Jill Herrera, our, our district clerk, and get registered. That's it. Any questions or comments?
Wanted, just general on, I think it was slide ten.
I'll go back to it.
The pie graph. But given that we don't have a budget yet, the other, yeah, the other pie graph. In your time here, uh those two big pieces of the pie, the tax levy and the general state aid, the forty-eight and the forty-one, that remain consistent? Have you seen it shift?
Yeah, it's definitely shifted. It's definitely shifted. It's kinda lo- it's kinda leveled off a little bit, but for the, I've been here thirteen years and it seems like over the first ten, it was like shifting a percent every year almost. I mean, we were really um uh becoming more and more dependent on the tax levy, which is challenging given the fact we live under a tax gap.
Wanted that noted. Thank you.
I, I should've mentioned that. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
The whole team, Dr. Leahy, Dr. Brody, Dr. Ward, and Don for all the work you've done. I don't think people realize that this is not just two months or three months. This is a twelve-month uh process. And this year was very difficult because, yes, we are reducing our staff and we never wanna reduce our staff. And personally, there's some positions I'm really difficult, especially um the ITA reading. I'll insert teachers on special needs, but this is a solid budget. Thank you to the, the team. Solid budget
Hey, we have one comment from the audience this evening. So, you know, if you'd like
Bring any toys? Well, no, I'm inviting you to come play with us. Why I'm here. Um, huh? Yeah, well, these were made at a last minute by a kid's mom the day before the fall playoffs. Yeah, she showed up and started handing shirts to people. We were like, anyways, um, hi. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Catherine Leo. I teach biology at the high school, but I'm also the high school esports coach, one of them, which is why I'm here. I told you back in January I would come back with an update on the season and that's why I'm here. So I handed out, and I hope you got them, um, it's like a little low-down of the playoffs. Everybody got? Awesome, beautiful. So I'm here to tell you about two things. One, our season was fantastic. The kids did a great job. Um, between the junior high and the high school, we have one, two, three, four, five, and ten teams. Nine of them made playoffs, which is amazing. The only team that didn't was the junior high Rocket League team. They were two places out. The top eight teams in the league get playoffs and they unfortunately landed in tenth place. But four out of the eight Mario Kart teams are in the playoffs. So there's eight teams total. Four of them are us. So it's gonna be us versus us probably this year again, which will be fun. Um, there are eight teams in Super Smash Brothers Cruise. Three of them are us. We also have a Rocket League team and we have one high school student who plays Super Smash Brothers solo. So it's, if you don't know, it's a fighting game. You can either play in a team of three or by yourself. We have both. Um, so really, really great season. Uh and the handout in front of you is the information about playoffs. So they are this Saturday and Sunday, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, at the Elite Gaming Arena downtown, which is, if you know where Clinton Square is, the building that says atrium on the outside, it's the basement of that building. So park anywhere around, pop in a door, head downstairs, follow the sounds, you'll find us. Um, it runs all day. So the games will start, you can see doors open at eight, open ceremony at nine, games start at ten, and then it will run probably till like three to four o'clock-ish. Um, if you're interested in coming to watch, Saturday is the better day. We have more students playing and competing on Saturday than we do Sunday. And the closer you can get there to ten or eleven in the morning, the more likely you are to actually see our students play. Cause it's a single elimination tournament. So if we happen to lose any game, we're out. So, um, hopefully you can come watch. It's a free event. There's food and drinks available. You'll see me and Mr. Bryson and all the kids just having a grand old time. And I hope that I see some of you there. There'll also be college recruiters too. So if you're interested on the whole college piece, they've been actively recruiting and asking for information on our students as well. So lots of cool things.
If it's, was your student or if it was uh Mr. Brett? I apologize.
That was it. That was all I had to say. So. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, do we uh have any Board of Education Committee reports? Anything, Mr. Thorne?
I have uh two policies on tonight's agenda for uh board adoption and.
Great. Mr. Brad.
Legislative will uh be meeting in two weeks. I've been. OC and BOCSIS, um, just to let everybody know, uh, within the next twenty minutes, you will be voting on just the administrative budget for BOCSIS and for five candidates. Uh what's interesting- What's interesting is every school district in the BOSSIS, all 23, all the way from Marathon, McRae, to Liverpool, Nurse, everybody's meeting right now because the vote has to be tonight. So you'll be voting on the administrative budget and also the five candidates.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree, Dr. Ward.
I just want to mention, we got some good news mail. We have Griffin's Guardians. They wrote to us to say, "Thank you very much, North Syracuse Central School District for taking part in the Change for Hope campaign." And through that, we were able to contribute as a school district, $6,312.92 for their ongoing battle against pancreatic cancer. So, so that's something that I just wanted to mention. So, thank you. Great job, everyone.
Dr. Ward, do we have any board comments?
Totally unrelated to anything we've heard today. If one of the esports teachers, or excuse me, esports coaches could email Jill the results of this weekend, if somebody's listening, that'd be great.
Okay, whatever. But Dr. Ward and I, two weeks ago, went to the OCMBOSIS Career Tech Society. I don't know if it was your student or Mr. Bryson. I'm not good with names. But this gentleman spoke and said how your program changed his life. And he's speaking and stuff, and I'm thinking he's in the computer program at BOSSIS. But he got to light one of the candles for one of the things that I think that's just outstanding. And that's because of you and Mr. Bryson.
Board comments still? Just wanted to follow up. I had brought wires last, last playoff tournament on June 8th. And we had discussed at some point that night of sponsoring a hole for the Board of Education, which we did last year. So, oh, then if you want to help sponsor that, it's 20 bucks. Member? Don't want to sponsor, you can give me 20 bucks anyway. If you don't, it won't change what I have for dinner tomorrow, so it's all good.
I'll just say the Facilities Committee today had a tour up at the high school. Matt, thank you for, for bringing us around, seeing all the progress on the pool, the gym, the facilities, the locker rooms, and the auditorium. So a lot of great stuff going on up there. And really quite incredible what, what you can do when you take some walls down and rearrange things. It looks, it's going to be beautiful when it's done. So I just wanted to thank you for, for taking us around to see that. All right, moving into routine action items. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting on April 7th, 2025. Do I have a motion for that? Josh and Mark, any questions? All those in favor, that's unanimous. A group B, C, and D together, the consideration of classification and placement of students. Do I have a motion to place B, C, and D before us? Beth and Amanda, any questions or comments? All those in favor, that is unanimous. Acknowledgement of the Business Office reports for December of 2024 and January of 2025. Do I have a motion to accept those? Beth and Xavier, any questions or comments? All those in favor, that is unanimous. Question action items. The recommendation to adopt the 2025-2026 North Syracuse Central School District budget. Do I have a motion to adopt that? Crabtree and Paul, any questions or comments? All right, this is a roll call. Next, we have the approval of the 2025-2026 Honorable Courtland Madison BOSSIS Administrative Budget. Do I have a motion to approve that? From Josh, any questions or comments? Hey, all those in favor? Hey, I'm going to abstain. Passed. The election of the Honorable Courtland Madison BOSSIS Board of Education members. Do I have a motion to approve the five board members that are listed? Xavier and Josh, any comments, question? All those in favor? Yes, thank you. Recommendation to amend the 2024-2025 district calendar. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Amanda and Mark, any questions or comments? All, all those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Recommendation to approve the memorandum of understanding between employee 08221, the North Syracuse Central School District, and the North Syracuse Academic Directors Association. Do I have a motion to approve that memorandum? Josh and Beth, any comments, questions? All those in favor, that is unanimous. Recommendation for the approval of the separation agreement between employee 07683, the North Syracuse Central School District, and the CSEA Local 1,000 North Syracuse Custodial Maintenance Unit 7811. Do I have a motion? Beth and Amanda, any comments, questions? Those in favor, that is unanimous. Request for approval of universal pre-kindergarten contracts with the providers listed for the 2025-2026. All seen those, we've been working with them. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Xavier and Josh, comments or questions? All those in favor? Have two reading, two policies here tonight. Up for adoption, policy 7410 Extracurricular Activities and 7420 Sports and the Athletic Program. Do I have a motion to place those two policies for us? Mark and Beth, any comments, questions? All those in favor, that is unanimous. A couple of retirements before we get into personnel. Deborah Gavin, a teaching assistant, is retiring with 36 years of service. Eileen Cook, a teacher aide, is retiring with six years of service. And David Parks, a bus driver, is retiring with 17.3 years of service. So as always, we wish all of you a long, happy, and healthy retirement, and thank you for your service to the district and the community. Okay, do we need an executive session before we take personnel? Wait a second, Josh? All those in favor? That is, I think we will be back.